There's chairs in there. A couple chairs?
Yeah, just go up here.
May I call this meeting to order and start with the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Linda, the real roll call please.
Mr. Zarfus.
Here.
Mr. Simpson.
Here.
Dr. Sanders, here. Ms. Lepeno.
Here.
Mr. Nodden. Mr. Bartley.
Here.
President Walters.
Here.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our January 7th special council meeting?
I move the minutes of January 7th council meeting be approved as we receive.
Do I have a second on that motion?
One second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. I just want to thank Linda for your extra effort of the seventy-five pages of minutes. Tremendous effort, myself. Thanks for that. Okay, citizens' comments, agenda. Does any of you want to speak now on the agenda or do you want to let Carol kind of lead off with the recreation and she can tell you what the committee met and we kind of start? Yes?
Elizabeth Fulmer, 132 South 7th Avenue. As I said last night, this has been a very difficult time for all of us. In expressing my own personal opinion, if we cannot depend on council to make good decisions, at the very least, we should expect that you will make legal decisions. So in that respect, I have brought you copies of the Cliff's Note edition of Sunshine Act so that those of you who are not familiar with the things that are required to be done in, just in case you missed that in T O D class, why, this way you can get the basics. And if you need further information, there's information there on how you can get the complete text from the Sunshine Act. Also, if you decide that you want to use Robert's Rules of Orders, if you let me know, I'll be happy to provide copies of all of those for everybody on the council. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
May I move on to recreation? Thank you.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Discussion on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move to the recreation committee to the court.
We held our first recreation meeting in January. I thought it was a very good meeting. From the same pool committee, we had Dan Clark and Sharon Montgomery. We had our own employees plus the committee, Jamie and Earl and I. And then I wanted to invite people that I have worked with and I highly respect, oh, I'm sorry, Clarion News was there. And I asked Joe Burns from, a local contractor was there, and then Rick Toad was here tonight. He was also there. And then for the committee, because I didn't know what their fundraising had been to date, I had Truman Mills, who is a successful fundraiser and who has managed all the campaigns for the fire company. So he was there. We started off, first of all, Mr. Zarfus gave us a clear picture of where the money is. I, it was the best report I had heard regarding the sewer authority money. And both, then Truman Mills gave the committee some information on how, basically, just some handouts about fundraising, fundraisers. But to tell you the truth, fundraising to me is further down the trail. We cannot tell these people, you have to go out and just arbitrarily throw a number out to them. Well, we don't know what that number is, so I think we have to work on that and that's coming down the road. Both Mr. Toad and Joe Burns had copies of the feasibility study and reviewed it. We found that a lot of the items are maintenance items that just need the handicap requirements are there. They have to be met. But I've got good news today. Rotary is giving us between ten and twenty thousand dollars towards our pool and also going to give us in kind. So, which we discussed at the meeting. Now you could, I thought it was a good meeting. So barring anything major, that pool opened the last day of school this year with no taxpayer dollars, we're going to do all right. Jamie, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, just to piggyback off of those comments, the biggest issues that lay in front of us right now to open the pool for this year are the ADA requirements. As was stated, with a little bit more research, the three, the four main areas for those requirements to get that pool open for this year is going to be two points of access in the main pool, which would probably require a lift, a portable lift, and also some type of handicap accessible stairs. The other requirement is going to be some type of ramp in the baby, in the baby pool, the waiting pool area. And then the fourth point is going to be some type of configuration with restrooms to make either both sides handicap accessible or possibly creating a family restroom, which would, what we think would complete that requirement. So those are the four big things to get the pool open for this year. So the next part of this, I guess, the first part for the rec is, that was discussed at that meeting, would be to get an approval here from the boards tonight for, the first part of this would be to have an ad hoc committee primarily comprised of Rick Toad and some other members to review the feasibility study that was already completed and to have him give us some feedback, recommendations on the feasibility study that we already had completed. Rick, would you like to make any comments about that this morning?
Yes. What I'm asking, or what I'm here for is to find out if the council, if they're willing or if they wish, that I would, as a volunteer, basically delve into the feasibility study that you already had done. I would like to contact Wade Associates to get some clarifications and to put that into better language as far as the priorities, what has to be done to open, you know, this year, what needs done by the eighteen-month kind of update and then prioritize the necessary other items and, basically, I think, I think the report is unclear, the report is confusing, the report isn't very well done, but I believe the money that Wade Associates expended, the money you spent to have that report done, I think, was well spent. I think all the information is there. I think what little information's missing, they, I'm sure they have in their files, it's just a matter of calling, asking the right questions, and just getting that in a little better format for all of us to understand. You know, the money's well spent, all the information's there, the study's good, I believe all the, what they've done is good work, and of course, what they've done is absolutely necessary. It's a fair step, if there was any notion to go after any kind of grant money, that was a requirement, to have that done first. There's a lot of good information in there, I just think the report's a little cloud, a little sketchy, and with, I guess, my expertise, I'd like to call Wade Associates, review those, get some clarifications, and put this, at least the budget items or priority items in a little better language for everybody to understand, so.
Appreciate that, Rick. I do.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any, I mean, is there any questions at this point?
When this all, when this all started, is it, is it, there's a rumor going around that the federal government is not going to come in and do anything unless there's a complaint? Is there any doubt to that?
Uh, I, I don't have the background in that. The only thing that I know, that I've read online, is that the first offense is a fifty-five-thousand-dollar offense, the following, and that's just what I've read. I don't know the governing body who is in charge of those requirements or who makes the call. I think even at that recreation meeting, I think we were all sort of going around the room asking, who is that body that makes that call? I don't know who it is. Tom, do you know?
It says Department of Justice. What usually happens is somebody can come in and file a complaint with the Department of Justice, and then they...
So basically, this is like PennDOT with the sidewalks?
No, this is ADA, like Voices of Independence.
No, 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 yeah, I know, with the sidewalks up on Main Street. It's a mandated thing, or is it, is it a recommendation?
No, these are mandated, these are actually mandated, not grandfathered in.
Well, it's just, there's, there's a rumor going around that, oh, they don't really have to do anything because the federal government...
I think it was mandated in two thousand and ten?
Ten, but the deadline's March 12th of this year.
Okay.
And Andrea, the only other thing, yeah, the only other thing I know is the other communities that I've communicated with about this issue is that they're all trying to do the same type of thing. They're, they're all pursuing these same type of devices to meet those requirements. Brenda?
Because I don't know, I'd like to know who this gentleman is and what his credentials are.
Oh, Rick Toad is an engineer with Eads.
With, with Eads Engineering here in Clarion.
Rick is an engineer.
They do, they do public works, projects, and...
They're actually rehabbing a pool in Rockaway.
Actually, I've been working with the Eads Group just outside of town here. We were on Greenville Avenue for many years, now we're right out past all the car dealerships on the right, right past Trader Horn. Anyway, I've been working there since nineteen seventy-seven, doing all kinds of site development work, gas and oil development, et cetera. And actually, the last, the last eighteen months, we've worked with Rockaway, Borough, and Total Rehab, their pool, and Punxsutawney also. And we have worked with Wade Associates on one of those projects recently and other projects in the past. So, again, I know they do good work, the report's a little confusing, but I believe the information's there and if the council so desires, I mean, at this point, you're not hiring the Eads Group.
He's doing...
I mean, as a committee member, I was willing to just make some calls, get some clarifications for the committee. This isn't soliciting hiring us to do anything at this point.
You want to make a motion?
Ms. Waters, we'd like to have a comment from the public, someone had their hand up.
Is there any other comment?
I was just gonna ask you, along with what Andrea said, handicap doesn't have anything to do with when you do upgrades? It doesn't have, you know, you know, have you heard that before, that when the, when you, you know, make the building better, you need to clean the handicap stuff? Is, I mean, we're not doing anything possibly with the pool, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
Doesn't have, it has to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any mechanism at this, at this point where people can make pledges to this process?
We are, we are not in the fundraising business, I would think you...
Well, is, is there, is there a process by which people can do that, so they can show their support?
Sharon can answer that question.
There is a bank account in the bank, just a couple doors down first now.
Community first.
Community first. Community first bank.
And the bank is administering this?
Right, you probably want to contact Eric Funken.
Eric, Eric Funken, it's in memory of Garberino.
The name of the account is Save the Pool.
Is it Save the Pool? Okay, I wasn't sure of that. So you can make pledges to that amount or just actually give, actually give a donation. Thank you.
Wendy, my amen, sir. So are we. Thank you.
So I guess we'd like to go ahead and move forward, and I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve, have the council approve, to have this ad hoc committee move forward with their clarification on their current pool feasibility study.
Okay, do I got a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Who's on the ad hoc committee?
It's Dan, Dan Clark, Sharon Montgomery, and they were the only two at the meeting, Brenda. But they have other members, Jennifer's on it and...
Melanie.
Melanie.
Oh, you're talking about our committee?
Yes. And that's their committee, then it's the recreation committee.
You're Rick?
Rick Toad.
Tom will be on that committee?
Tom is on that committee.
And I wasn't able to make the first...
And Andrea is on our committee, she...
Who's on that?
And Joe Burns.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Yeah, mine on the committee, I didn't know about.
Yeah, you're on it. You're on it now.
That's up for discussion. I'm just kidding.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're in no opposed, motion carries?
And I have one more thing, unless Jamie wants to do it?
Uh, go ahead, I'll... Do you want me to?
I can do it. I think it's time this borough makes a commitment to this pool. If down the line we're going to have to go over, go after grants, we need a twenty-five-year lease on that pool. And I would like to make a motion that we have the borough secretary get in touch with the school district and negotiate a twenty-five-year lease on that pool.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion on the motion of a twenty-five-year lease?
John, we had just sent a letter asking for a one-year, so would that, of course, take place at the end of that one year, or can we amend the current?
John will have to...
You know?
I haven't seen anything on that issue.
I mean, because you were already starting on twenty-five-year, I didn't know if there was any way to tack on the three months or whatever it was.
Well, is the one-year lease signed?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so there's already at least a place for one year, and this would then either, I don't know how, if you could do it, so that this part that had already started would be included in that twenty-five, or if we have to wait till this holds up in June?
Depending on, but what everybody agrees to.
Sure.
I mean, it can be amended, or it can be tacked on at the end, or whatever. Whatever we can work out.
And the only other reason why the magic number's twenty-five is because down the road in the future, to apply for D C N R plans or anything, they require, you know, five years, it can't be a ten, it can't be fifteen, it can be a five.
That's why I'm wondering if we can amend it or not, you know, so, looking forward to it.
Okay, any other discussion? We got a motion and a second. Permission to send a letter, most by here, at least to Clarion Area School District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're in none, motion carries. You want to roll, Carol?
I'm on a roll. The final thing is just for you, if you, when the sewer authority was sold, there was, I think, hundred and fifty thousand given to the library, the park, and the fire company. In discussion with Mr. Weaver, as a matter of fact, he had suggested he would like some of this money now to go to the pool. So I think, coming down the line, I have to give this to John when they, I have, the ordinance will have to be amended to include the pool. And I think right now, tossing around the figures, it was fifteen hundred dollars for the little grant, and I believe seven thousand dollars for each of the other thing. I think we got it made.
Yeah, with the revenue.
With the revenue money, so, I'm really thrilled. So we'll maybe bring this up next time, or when we get a better idea of how much money we actually will need, if that's okay.
Okay.
And I guess the only other thing to maybe think about as far as changing the ordinance would be, do we keep the idea that it's still a ten thousand dollar per year type of commitment on the budget, or do we change that number down?
I think that's something we'll have to discuss.
Hopefully, you know, your next committee meeting, if we discuss that, and then you can bring back recommendations to the board. That's correct. So that would be a great thing to discuss at the committee meeting and bring back to the board.
Well, I want to thank everybody that came to the meeting, all the volunteer help and Rotary, they're taking this on as, as their local project.
And, John, you'll take a look at that ordinance, just so we know. And Linda, that's in our Borough Code?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
That particular ordinance?
Yes, it's in the packet.
And I'd like to thank you guys just for tackling this and trying to get some real information, and I think we're moving in the right direction.
It's like a whole other world today than it has been. I guess, I just wanted to ask one more thing, not to be a Debbie Downer, but we still have like the, the issue of the thirty thousand dollars, the season and cost to run it that everyone's been playing about.
I guess, the money is already in the budget to run the pool. As I stated to Carol when this all started, the money's in your budget to run the pool.
Okay.
The only issue, and I, and I discussed to her and the committee, the only issue that we have is the leak in the baby pool that really was...
Right, that was my next question.
When she talked to Joe Burns, he was very confident that we can fix that, and if he can fix that, that will save, Tom, I mean, you can tell him any gallons of water you can...
A thousand gallons a week.
Yeah, that was, but then remember the one meeting that we had, it started snowballing? It was like, well, there's a leak in the baby pool, and then when you go to shut, shut the valve, it can't be shut, you have to like, I don't know, there was...
Everything's good.
Yeah.
That was just the operators.
I guess I just want to make sure that next year it wasn't like, oh, well, we have to shut the pool down, and we have to go through all this again, I mean, again.
The money that's in the budget is not increasing, it's basically our recreation tax funds, very similar to what the fire company and the library gets. That money is yours in the budget, the millage collected for you will be there. That's not going to change whatsoever, so that money's there this year, you shouldn't have any trouble. I guess down the, the committee will make, you know, the committee has some tough choices, do you want the YMCA to still run it, or do you want some other organization to run it? Those will have to be done at the committee meetings, and then they can bring us back, they're back, fine, you know, we can make some decisions on that, so.
And I want that to be, rather than just keep it in-house, we want the whole ad hoc committee involved.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there's also, I mean, let's face it, there's a whole pool feasibility study out there with some big dollar renovations. So there's going to be some serious talk about fundraising and some serious talk about how we can pull more dollars into this pot, because the numbers that are in that feasibility study, that's going to be a tough choice for the borough to tackle.
Right, yeah.
Earl, Earl, do you have anything to say?
Only that Mr. Toad and Joe Burns really added to their wake-up call that we need to save the pool and open the pool, and, along with the committee. So I can't thank you and Joe Burns enough because, for being there, giving your views and for saving the pool, and, like I said, the money's there, we can touch the others. The Paul Weaver, and like I said, I've talked, said before, I've talked to Paul Weaver, and he definitely wants to, money to go to, to the pool, he wants the pool to operate, open the same as we would, little lake and softball, and we're going to do it, like I said. Dan Clark and I have a good one, no fly, what's in there?
Right.
So the pool, the pool will go, I assure you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing, there's a letter here, is this...
This was just handed to us tonight.
Okay. Regarding the support from the League of Women Voters in repairing and approving the pools, so, there's also another entity out there that has an interest as well, other Rotary and those who apply this evening.
Yes.
Well, and just as a reminder that it was approved last year to allow signage to be sold at the pool as well.
And again, I think those are some great ideas, and as we switch to management group, you know, we, as the borough, cannot do that, but as we can subcontract, then that can be all legal and...
Well, now that we know there's going to be a pool at next time, a lot, a lot easier to be able to...
Twenty-five years means like all these things are...
That's a little on you here.
You know, again, as the committee meets, I think these are the next things you got to tackle, and I think we've got a great start, so. Okay, moving along, let's, do I have a motion to approve the appropriations for the month of February?
Move the appropriations for the month of February, be approved as we receive them.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second?
Do I have any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next thing of business is, we need permission for Todd to draw down the C D G B Y funds to pay COCO Engineering for their invoice at the South Street final invoice and until the boat launch. So I have a motion to do that.
I assume move.
Do I have a second on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The treasurer's report is in your packet, and also the budget analysis. Okay, the next one, do I have a motion to approve the Marchadine Special Event Request for the Marchadine's Baby Block, the route was slightly changed, beginning and ending at Clarion High School. Most of the time, we have the Public Works and the Public Safety and Committee look at these, but because of some of the changes and they want to advertise, they want to get it out as soon as possible. So I got a motion to, to do that, the Marchadine.
And this was emailed to all of us.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is designate Clarion Borough Employee Todd Clasamo as Contracting Officer for Community Block Grant Funded Assistant in Construction Project. We need Todd to do this for the Toby Boat Launch Project, so I need a motion so we can be for that.
I assume move.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that motion?
Only that Todd Clasamo is a good man for that job, the work that he does.
Now, this is not just for Todd, this will be for the whole year? Any of the, yes, any of the...
Any C D G D.
Muddies that we do for the year. No, we don't know how much we're going to get, you know, but down the year, Todd will be responsible for those two, dispersing those. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next one is, we have to adopt a resolution, twenty-twelve-three-three-three, resolution that the acting Borough Secretary Treasurer be appointed Chief Administrator of the Police Pension Fund. That is basically something we have to do, have a chief administrator, it has to be the acting secretary to do that for our pension fund. Do I have a motion for that?
So move.
I got a second for that.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, is this legal now? I, I'm...
Yes.
Why, why again are we putting, and it's not the person, it's the procedure? Why are we putting Mark in charge of the police pension fund?
Carol, you're on that conference call, can you answer that for us?
Because he is the acting Borough Secretary, and there might be papers and forms.
Who has been, who has done it before?
The borough manager.
Borough manager, I was, and then Nancy was.
This is in case anyone would start requesting pension benefits, which we have one individual that's contacted us to, so we don't have any kind of delay, because someone at the borough has to sign off, and in the past, it's always been the borough manager, secretary or treasurer, which has always been the title or...
I, I guess my main concern is, Mr. President, why have we not addressed the issue of putting in a person as acting borough manager beside the person that was nominated first, that there are some issues with that person having too much control? You, essentially, what, what we're doing here is making Mark the eminent borough manager as we want him to be, which I had a problem, this email that we got, why didn't it come from somebody else, why did it come from Mark? And that's normally stuff that you get from a borough manager. And that's normally stuff that we get from a Borough Manager, telling us what's going to be on the agenda, what will be voted for. Essentially, we're doing what the council disagreed with, and certainly what the citizens have disagreed with, that we have one person in charge of everything.
As we stated before, Linda can explain why she could not do that because of.
I understand why Linda cannot do, but I'm asking you now, why haven't you moved forward and addressed it in another way? That it could be more legal and more in line with what the council voted for.
Brenda, that is an employee of Claring Borough that we can put in that job at this
That's not the meaning, just that.
You're a part of council, Brenda, you have a right to say who you think should take those positions. We are trying to keep this running, and when we had the conference call, this is what they told us.
I guess my.
Please let me know who you would like out of employees to take over that position.
And I guess my issue here is that we are still working on the, some arbitrary decisions that were made that were not thought through quite well when the decision was made not to.
What about Bob Reagan? Why could he not be in that position? I mean, I guess my only concern is, and I realize that she, it doesn't have any say as to what pension's doing what. I mean, all he's doing is signing technical work. It's not like he's making these major decisions, but I understand where the public perception, you know, is coming when you're dealing with a police pension plan, and he's the chief administrative officer. So would it be possible in this particular situation, since we're back to where we were before, to possibly ask Bob Reagan to do that? Because it's just an interim position, it's not going to be forever. And then that way, you know, chief is Secretary Treasurer, but we're not, putting all of our eggs in the basket. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Brenda, I just, I, you know.
Yes, I just have a question, what's the responsibilities of that, of that person? What is their responsibility as the chief administrative officer of the pension fund?
To sign documents that were prepared by.
Do they have any decision power making?
No.
Yeah.
They sign off on the paperwork. Right now, we're providing information to Macon Hopp to get some actuarial work done. The chief administrative officer has to sign that. Anything at Wells Fargo, if there's COLAs that need, you know, people receive cost of living increases, someone needs to authorize that, and we have no one as of now.
And essentially, all that information would have to come to us anyway first, and then that basically, or they would have.
Well, as far as cost of living increases and so forth, they would be authorized to sign off on that. We get all the benefits started, that's what that's giving.
It's just a matter of signing forms. There's no administrative.
Okay, any other further discussion? I got a motion on the floor, I got a second, any other further discussion?
Are you going to open it up to the audience?
You know, once we're in our business part of the meeting, we're trying to.
Well, I know that other boroughs have chiefs who serve in that capacity. I think, though, with what we've just been through, this would probably not be the best investment.
Nobody's asking him.
But you're giving him all of the abilities. We're gradually leading up to where the only thing that's missing is the title.
And it's the perception of the public.
It's the perception of the public, and, you know, I, I'm just wondering, when does he have his time to do his job as chief? I mean, we're giving him all these extra things to do, I mean, we need to make certain that his first and foremost priority in this town is to be the chief of police, and right now, we're distracting him with, it looks like starting to be several other things. And again, public perception is what we're looking at.
Linda, how often does a signature, or how much time does this require? You've been around a long time.
Well, right now, we fill out the year-end reports, so we need to get certain reports in so that we get our funding.
Now, does he spend his time on that, or?
I usually fill those paperwork out, and I give it to the Borough Manager, Secretary Treasurer, they review over everything, I explain anything if they have questions. If they don't, they sign off on it, we get it sent into the organizations.
So it's really.
So basically, and that's what I've always done, I've always prepared that worksheet and gotten it on its way, just for a signature.
So would that, Linda, would that be a conflict for you to be assigned that duty, to sign off on that?
I can't sign off on that because I handle the money situation, so I can't have those positions.
Okay.
That was our first idea, Jamie, was to give that to her.
Linda basically does all the paperwork.
I understand.
But I'm still concerned about the perception of the public, that every time we, you hand off something to him, it says he's acting as Borough Manager, whether he has the title or not. And every time you give somebody else an additional assignment, or let them do one thing, then the next time is so much easier to pass it off to that person, and eventually that person subsumes, or all of those duties then fall to that person, and there you go. I've been doing it. I'm in.
Okay, I got a motion on.
I still have a question about.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Okay, dude, you're changing the rules, dude. Off your January, you were allowing people to speak after a motion was made, and now in February, you're saying no, and you have not yet set up the rules of procedures. Who was involved in this conference call you're referring to?
My understanding is that in January, Borough Council reorganized, and they abandoned their rules of how they do their meeting, where their public comment period. From what I understand, that was formally adopted at some point, they had a public comment policy back in 2010 or 2011. Council abandoned that due to the unusual nature of things. We are getting back to.
Okay, don't you think that should be something that's actually proposed and voted on, and instead of all of a sudden, no, we can't talk? We could last couple of weeks ago, but we can't talk this week? So you haven't made any.
We, you know, just to give you an, we are going to work in committee on a set of procedures to run a meeting, and then give it to everybody and say, here's, you know, and everybody must review.
But we don't have much to tweak until then, what you're going to do.
Well, all we're doing is going back to what we've done in the past, and we're trying to get through this part, I know it's very difficult, so, I mean, we're just.
Can you at least tell us about this conference call?
Yes.
Who was on that conference call?
Okay, hold on, hold on. Look, I know it's been confusing. No, no, that's why, unfortunately, the president of council, and council is here to run the meeting, they're not here to conduct an open forum, except when it's public comment period. They did so in the past because everybody, there was some serious issues that were addressed. No, you are welcome to, you are welcome to ask council those questions whenever it's appropriate, on agenda items or in public comment period. And at that point, you are welcome to do that, but they're getting back to the agenda and when public comments are. We're not going to be taking 50 million questions from everybody in the public at this point.
Why don't you give us the information we need, so we don't have to ask questions?
Right.
Carol, turn.
Okay, I will.
Order.
Okay, fine, I just want to know what was going on. We held a conference call, it was Linda, the president of council, the chief, Ed Smith of Wells Fargo, and myself, and we held that, and that business is coming up later in the meeting regarding a pension ordinance. And the conference call was with Colleen Dear of Macon Hopp and Associates, and an attorney, Randall Rhodes, who wrote this pension ordinance, it's coming up for review We can, if you want to move that up, I have no problem, and you just want to forget about it until it comes up and.
I mean, we can, if you want to make that, you're more than happy, but right now, we have a motion. Hold on one second, there's a motion on the table, and it's consecutive. We're currently in discussion, is there a motion to table that motion until further in the meeting and proceed with whatever committee we're on. Is there any further discussion, or can I?
I'll motion to table that right now.
I'll second.
Okay, that's on the table. All in favor of tabling the motion to adopt the resolution 2012-333? Say aye. What's that?
The fire wasn't thrown off, I wasn't sure.
Who's in favor of tabling this? Should I call for a roll call vote? Aye. Okay, who's in favor of tabling this, say aye. Anybody opposed to tabling this?
No.
Okay.
Not.
That's tabled.
Under the, under your agenda, the Public Works Record, there is permission for the solicitor to advertise ordinance 2012-787. It's an amendment to the Borough Claring General Employees Pension Plan. Now, I will tell you what I know about that. Evidently, all new hires are being put into a new pension plan. The ordinance was not passed. Ed Jones, Ed Smith of Wells Fargo, was concerned that it was the end of the year, and he had employees' money, and he had to have a place to put it.
Just to clarify, the ordinance was set to go through the beginning of January, but due to reorganization and Jason Brendan, myself leaving, they could not vote on that. But it was set to be voted on at the beginning, just so you know.
So that was the basis of the conference call, because we needed to talk to the attorney that wrote the ordinance, and Colleen Dear, who is our actuary, who's actually a Claring University grad, because there are concerns about this money and the forms that they have to fill out. Duke knows a little bit more of the timeline, I'll pass it on to you to further explain.
Basically, November 17th, council, December 17th, 2010, council made a motion for a defined benefit plan to new employees, Public Works. In that plan, we basically, it's a defined contribution where the Borough would basically contribute 5.5% every year to their pension instead of the other pension fund. December 1st, 2010, the motion was amended, and sent, saying that we need to get an ordinance to do that. Some of the people were supposed to get together and do that. Then, at the end of 2011, that has not been done yet, they were hoping that this would be done in 2011. Got into the first meeting, and they're still, are, you know, trying to get this done. So basically, we have to get it done so these folks can get their pension and be able to move it into their investments and do what they need to do. But that conference call is when we were explained that we need to have somebody be able to sign from the Borough, that's all it is, is a signature. The Macon Opera Firm brings us the papers, Sam Lynch does the other stuff, it's just a signature. So at that conference call, we learned about the other stuff that we needed to do. So I guess the first motion that we have is to, we need to approve this so we can get our employees' funds and do what we said we did. Unfortunately, that was put on hold for some of the issues that we've had. Any discussion further on that? Can I take a vote so we can approve? Do I have a motion on that?
I need the motion.
Yes, I have a second. Okay, any other further discussion on that?
What is this motion exactly saying? We're going to adopt the ordinance, just adopt the new ordinance, that's all this is about now.
My understanding is.
Adoption will be next month.
And I'm assuming we're talking about 787, 2012?
Yes.
With the one thing that the ordinance does need amended, as far as the dates on the back indicate that it's 2011, and those should be amended to 2012.
Just second on the motion?
You seconded the motion, Jamie, I think maybe did, did you second that one?
I don't think there was a second.
Well, we were in discussions, so someone had to have seconded that.
I need a second.
Somebody asked a question.
Oh, okay.
I'll be happy to second it.
Okay. Any further discussion on what is up now? It's ordinance 2012-787, and.
Has amended.
Has amended as our solicitor pointed out. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now we have a tabled motion, we'll need a motion to bring it back on the table. We need a motion to bring that back on the table.
I said, bring it back on the table.
Seconds.
We've got a second. Okay, any further discussion on the resolution 2012-333 before we vote on that?
My concern again is continuing to disregard how the council voted previously, as well as the citizens' comments about the separation of powers, the separation of signatures, how we appear. I would think that we would like to appear to be doing things right. I think we are doing things right.
And Brenda, just to piggyback off that, I'm assuming this is the administration, the administrative committees, this is their recommendation. So I'm assuming that that committee obviously first approached Linda about doing that, and that was taken off, and that the next, the next person would have been Mark.
Linda will do the work, you just need.
Right, I understand, but I just want to make sure was, is it something that Bob would be?
The conflict with Bob Reagan doing what he's asking for?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I think there might be a zoning.
Why would there be a zoning?
I'm more so a pension board. It's a signature.
I guess my question to John, and a very.
And it's either, like, the form used to be signed, the one form I was talking about.
It has to have a title?
Well, the one form I'm talking about that's going into the state is, the Borough Manager puts on it now. Secretary Treasurer's been in it past, so.
He doesn't have that title right now. That's my problem.
It's a certification.
That's the only clarification I wanted to know.
My understanding is that design officer is, the only restriction that I could find on him was that he was not to hold any elective office in the municipality. He doesn't have the title of a.
To have it be signed by zoning officer, what does that mean? I know what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, okay. You want to do a, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Second motion is very similar to the one that we just went through, it's basically for the general pension that we've just created now, we need somebody to sign those papers also. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2012-334?
I assume Lou.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Just so you're aware, this is going to be the chief doing the general pension as well.
Oh, yeah, we figured that one out.
Okay, do I have a second on that? I got a second, any discussion on that?
Yes, I have the same objection.
Okay, so do we know it?
I mean, the same objection that I had to the first one.
Who can do it? Give me, give me somebody else. Give me an answer.
Well, how about the tax collector?
I mean, surely there's somebody else that we could put in to help with this work, so that it doesn't appear that, that we are doing things inappropriately. If you say Bob can't do it, how about the tax collector?
I don't, I don't have any comment, because as long as I've been, there's always been a Borough Manager, Secretary Treasurer, it's always been one and the same, so I don't know what the answer is to that.
But to be honest, you're the one that's doing the work, and you're handing the papers in front of somebody, and they're signing it and sealing it.
Which has always been the case.
Okay, we have a, we've got a motion, we've got a second, can I have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carried. Moving right along, the next one. I'll just call on AZ Complete, the grant audits for DEP, the EPA, it's $3,000, it's time sensitive, and Linda, you want to explain what this is all about?
These are the two grants that Sam Lynch, a financial consultant, said have to be done as soon as everything is completed with it, so that we don't have to pay the state back. You have to do it in a timely fashion. So basically, he knew about these two, he came in last week and met with us, neither one is completed. The final request was sent into both organizations, however, neither one's completed, so until we get the final payment, we're not going to be able to do the audit. payment, we're not gonna be able to do the audit. So, I did call and see what the status of both of them were. We know what the status is. Once we receive the final payment, the audit can be done. The money is in the budget to complete them, but I think that with the situation, he just would feel better if we put a motion on the floor to have the A complete those as soon as they come in, which he is, when he get all the materials, it's just a matter of final payment come in, put that with it, hand it off, the audit will be done. That way, we're not gonna have to pay the state back any of the money.
And there's quite a bit of money there, and this has to be done before March thirty-first, correct?
And this is money that we've already spent? This is money that's already been?
Well, the EPA grant, we've got a certain portion of that, and the final payment went in, and when it went in, there was twenty-five hundred additional money left. So, that's the one that has to be completed by March thirty-first. The DEP grant, when I called to find out the status on that, they're extremely understaffed. They went from three and a half to one, and so they're hoping to get all that processed, and within five weeks, we should have our money, if not, we'll to call back. But until that money is received, the audits can't be completed. So, we are in the process of that, but we don't wanna jeopardize anything.
Okay, so I got a motion to approve that. So, I got a second on that.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Okay, second council meeting in February. As of right now, we do not have any getting through this. We have any outstanding other business that we are going to have to have that meeting. For some unknown reason, we will have that, we will advertise that in the, but right now, we are actually caught up by getting these things done, to where we're in pretty good shape. So, hopefully, our committees can meet this month, and we come back at the first of March, and we'll have a lot of committee report meetings, and we'll go from there. Um, one agenda next.
I, I have a quick question, that's just a clarification. It does say at 5:00 PM in the Claring Library, so that'll be at 5:00, not 7:00?
If, if we have one.
If, if you have one, it will be at 5:00.
If we have one, it will be 5:00.
Okay.
But right now, that is, we've actually got caught up, believe it or not. We're legal, we're, we're, everybody's in good shape, so right now, we're okay. Um, our Solicitor asked for an executive session for personnel issue.